All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good afternoon. Thanks for joining us today. One hour before sprint here for the men's NCAA championship game. My name is John Abdu. I'm the executive director of the ACWPC, the Association of Collegiate Water polo Coaches. I'm joined today with our president of the association, Felix Mercado, and one of our vice presidents, Ted Minnis. And I'll give them longer introductions here in a second, but we appreciate everybody being here today. The the goal of today is to have an open town hall meeting. We'll talk a little bit, introduce ourselves in the ACWPC and some of the things that we're working on and what we're doing together. But then also be able to take answer questions and speak to you all today. There's a Q and A function in this webinar. On the bottom, there is no chat. But if you want to use the question and answer function, please put in your questions and we'll be able to answer them. At the end, that'll be the majority of the time we'll use for discussion and to answer those questions. But hopefully, in the first kind of 10, 12 minutes here, we'll be able to answer some of the questions about what's going on and what we're doing. So the ACWPC as an organization is what is who represents college water NCAA water polo coaches across the country. It was founded in 2005. And I'm the, I believe, I'm the third executive director. I've been serving in this role in the last five years, about five, five and a half years in this role. And our purpose not only is to represent college water polo coaches to the NCAA and in the work that we're doing, but we also have a strong mission to help grow and foster the retention and growth of programs at the collegiate level. And that's what we're going to talk about today and what we're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to do. And so the organization on a day to day basis is really run by Coach Mercado. So Coach Felix Mercado joining us today as the president of the of the association. He's also the head men's and women's water polo coach at Brown University. He's he's served on several NCAA committees and has really helped push the this association into into relevancy into where we're at today. We all, the rest of the board, we have two vice presidents, one vice president, Coach Ted Minnis here, head men's and women's water polo coach at Harvard University. He's also currently the chair of the NCAA Rules Committee and serves on the championship committee for the tournament that's happening this weekend at USC and is one of the kind of mainstays in the NCAA championship committee realm. And so we appreciate his service. Second vice, our second vice president is Coach Karen Crawford, the head women's water polo coach at San Diego State University. She can be here with us today as she is coaching in the Denny Harper Cup down in San Diego, UC San Diego versus San Diego State Women today. It's obviously a busy women's water polo day, so we don't have Coach Crawford with us today. And that would be comprised of the executive board, the four of us, right? The two vice presidents, the president, the executive director, the rest of our board is Coach Dan Lason, head coach at UC Davis, Coach Greg Lonzo from Claremont McKenna, and Jay O'Neil is a serves as our treasurer and also our Brian Suhovy, who represents Division Two over at Fresno Pacific University. And that's the board as you see it now. And so again, the 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 goal of this organization and really since in the last five years, we've really worked hard to try to bring more relevancy and influence back into this organization as the ACWPC is the direct connection to the NCAA when it comes to coaches and coaches needs and the and really the sports needs. So we have joined a coalition of other coach associations called the ICAC. It's the it's a coalition of all coach associations together, particularly of Olympic and we'll call the the non-football and basketball sports together to work towards some of the common goals that we have for retention and and working together for retaining and growing our programs at the collegiate level. And we'll talk a little bit more about it when we go. We know this, that the college water polo in America is the heart of the infrastructure of our sport. We know that it's not, it's it's where the nuts and bolts exist, that college water polo for men's and women's our sport in America. This is where the heartbeat is. This is where the infrastructure is. This is the marketplace for our sport. It is because there is NCAA water polo and water polo collegiate level, we are able to have professional coaches and full-time coaches and people who can dedicate themselves to the sport financially full-time. So we're well aware of what the the sport means at the NCAA level. And we want to continue to see it grow and flourish and particularly thought today because of this town hall meeting that during the time of this pandemic and and coming out of it, there are questions, concerns, and we want to be upfront and 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 work with everybody together on this. And so we will do this again before we get started in at the women's NCAA championship in May. So we'll offer another opportunity. Hopefully, we'll see, be able to see the games in person at that point, hopefully. And so we'll do this again during the women's championship talk again. So without further ado, Coach Mercado, is there anything you'd like to tell everybody again, as serving as the president of the of the association? And we appreciate your service.
Well, thank you, John, for that introduction. And I obviously want to, you know, thank everyone for attending and and I know we're all looking forward to to watching a great game today with, and we want to obviously wish good luck to USC and UCLA for the national championship and all the women teams that are playing today as well. It's been a, you know, the pandemic, if anything, it's it's put us it's it's provided a lot of challenges for us that two years ago, I probably would have, wouldn't think we were ready for, but more than anything, I think we were ready to to handle what came at us and and, you know, and I think what what it would it made clear to me was that this sport is nationally. It's not just West Coast and East Coast. I think that the support, I think that all the the coaches out West, whether the Pac-12, the WWPA, they all understand the importance of the growth of our sport on the East Coast, in the Southeast, in the Midwest. And and we all see that as an important push that we all need to work together towards, you know, we are, you know, we're we're just, I know, I know that we only have Karen Crawford as our only female member, but we are, we're hoping to be a little bit more have a little bit more diversity as far as the gender and because we know how important it is to to make sure that the women the women athletes and the women coaches are getting an opportunity to be part of this of this great growth because they definitely are. They do a lot of of work for it. And Karen's been very instrumental in a lot of our of our of the stuff that we put together. She's a, she's helped in a lot of ways. And unfortunately, she couldn't be here. And and obviously, if if you recently with everything that's going on, and I'm I'm talking about a couple of things, I'm also trying to answer some questions that I saw on the on the on the Q and A and and, you know, there's a question here about diversity and representation and inclusion. And and I think that, you know, both you know, we are, we're not only part of the Association of Collegiate Water Polo Coaches, we're also part of the USA Water Polo Task Force in in trying to make sure that our sport is is a is a place that is is for everyone, regardless of what you you look like or what you where you're from. And and we're really making a big push to really make this sport nationally and 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 grow. So thank you for attending. And John, thank you for your great leadership, you know, you know, having, you know, having served as a president for I guess, five years. It's been, it's made my job easier having you and, you know, and Karen and Ted is what my the vice presidents have been great. And so I want to definitely say thank you. So I'll hand it over to 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 head coach Ted Minnis, who who's the head coach at Harvard University Men's and Women's Programs is also, you know, as I stated before, he's on the task force. And he's on the championship committee for the men. So thanks again.
Thanks, Felix. Thanks, John. It's been an honor for me to 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 work with with you two over the last year and the rest of the board. You know, I remember when the pandemic first started and Felix called the board together and said, we need to get out in front of this. We need to figure out, have a plan and go to the NCAA and say, we have a plan. And we we started meeting every week. And John, I think, started really getting a hold of the NCAA, people who are in charge of the championship committees and having conversations with them. And and our our committee got a seat at the table, pretty much. And we were one of the first ones to come up with a plan. And and we were there every step of the way. And and I think I'm most proud of that group for taking that time every Wednesday for at lunchtime for for us on the East Coast and nine AM on the West Coast and and getting together and coming up with with ways that we could safely play water polo and have a championship and not disrupt seasons and have equity for both the men and the women. Lots of conversations about all that. So I think I'm I'm proud of what we put together and to be on the championship committee of the men's and see a great day on Thursday with with the first round games and the semis yesterday, you know, great fought games. Congratulations to all the team, six teams that made it. You know, it's it's going to be nice to see a championship that that we didn't imagine was going to happen a year ago. And so I'm just, I'm really proud of everything that that this this coaches association has done over the last year under your two's leadership.
Thanks, Teddy. And 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 I wanted to give a shout out to all our partners in this. Right? We had, we have had great partners in the NCAA to make it this championship happen. They could have easily canceled this championship and it was on the table many a times. And it was because frankly, Felix, your plan and the other other things that were put forward that helped us adjust our seasons and and show that water polo was willing to be flexible enough to squeeze our seasons into the spring that they continue to sponsor this championship. And so we'll we'll get through this presentation so that we can all log on and watch this championship game as I think it's a a testament to our ability to to adapt into the situations around us and be able to celebrate having this championship today. I also want to shout out everyone at the NCAA for this and all our conference commissioners that that have been very helpful with this. You'll hear some of them by name as some of our conferences have been really instrumental in in making a lot of the growth at the NCAA level happen. And and as well as all of you. So if you're on this call right now, it means you care a lot about college water polo as much as we do and understand its importance and and why we are doing what we're doing to ensure what's happening. So we've had some success, obviously, that we've discussed already during the pandemic. But there's also some some issues that we need to discuss and how we can all get out there together and collaborate in a way that can keep our sport viable moving forward. So I'm going to go and share my screen and talk a little bit about about where where we're at and 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 what we can do. And and if you guys have any questions, again, feel free to use the the Q and A feature that you have. And as they come up and we're talking about them, feel free to pop them in. So understand that in the last, particularly the last 10 years, we've had steady growth in the varsity level for both our men's and women's programs. We're at right now the highest participation we've had of women's programs ever. And these numbers are off by one or two based on some of the cuts that we're going to talk about that happened during our time. But it's important, it's important to recognize that we're still fighting for those programs and and trying and and trying to get them back together as a as a group. And so we've also had the most men's programs. We're also currently at the most men's programs we've had since 1982. Right? So we had, there was a massive, massive decline of men's programming over the last 20 years. And for us to be back at the highest level we've had since 1982 is is an important thing for us to recognize. And and we're not done. So you're looking at about, again, this combines divisions one, two, and three. So we have approximately 65 women's programs, divisions one, two, and three combined, 52 men men's divisions one, two, and three combined. And this is with the additions of Augustana, starting in the fall in Illinois, Biola, a new Division Two institution out here in Southern California, that will have men's and women's water polo starting this fall. And as you're seeing the great success of Mount St. Mary's men's women's program starting this this spring out in Maryland and and a big shout out to them for getting started. As they've been a big boost as they've already started playing and they've hit the ground running with that. We are currently, water polo is one of the fastest growing high school sports in the country. Again, despite the pandemic, in spite of it, we're still continue to grow at the high school level. And I think it's really important that everybody recognize that the the connection between high school water polo to collegiate water polo is going to be important when we talk about growth strategy. So when sometimes when you hear the membership numbers of clubs or JOs and things like that, while that's very helpful for the growth of the sport in general, when colleges are looking to add varsity water polo at their institution, they're not necessarily going to look at the club numbers in their state. They're going to look at the high school numbers in their state. They want to see what sort of high school participation there is across the board before they add water polo at that level. So when we start talking about how and when and why programs are added or why they're they're cut, high school water polo and the existence of high school water polo and the growth of high school water polo becomes very, very, very important to to that structure. That being said, the numbers will show in the next couple of slides has shown this great growth for high school water polo of the last 10 years. And specifically now in Texas, starting in the fall of 2022, and it was pushed back one year due to COVID. But now, starting in the fall of 2022, they're going to have a pilot program for in the UIL, which is their state sanctioned sports sports governing body of adopting water polo as a high school sport. I want to preface that by saying how great a news it is, but I want to preface it by saying that that is a pilot program. So our collaboration and all of our support and everything that as a community that we put towards Texas is going to be really important. So that word pilot doesn't exist anymore. That becomes a mainstay and it becomes a sport that stays in the state of Texas for decades to come, for years to come in perpetuity, so that we can build off of that high school level participation in the state, which will then lead to college growth in the in the state as well. And we want to make sure that everybody understands that. Over the last several years as well, there have been an expansion of more playing games than NCAA. Sometimes we'll hear, well, you know, can the coach association lobby for eight teams or 12 teams at the NCAA tournament at that level? And and I know Coach Minnis and Coach Mercado, who have served on the championship committee, I've heard these questions before and I've heard this happen. And I think everybody needs needs to recognize that the the growth that we've had has been unprecedented in relation to other sports. So the NCAA has a bylaw that says you need 40, at least 40 on the women's side, 50 on the men's side of one division worth of sports to be able to sponsor a championship. What the NCAA gives us is a waiver to sponsor the championship because we have a combined 50 of divisions one, two, and three together when we get to that point. So there have been a lot of exceptions made at the NCAA level to keep water for the water polo championship in the way it is. And those playing games have offered some of that growth along the way. So
I can, I can say to John that the championship, the men's championship is is a four-team tournament. And the the other rounds are are games that are are play-in games or they are called first round games, but the actual championship is the is the starts on Saturday. We've been lucky. The NCAA has allowed us to be on site like they did this year in years past. And everything is done regionally. There are only two teams that are seeded in the NC2As for the men, and that's the first two seeds. Everybody else is placed into the bracket.
Yeah. And I think we've seen that those playing games, though, has it's given an opportunity for more schools to host what would be a playing game for the NCAA. And we haven't had those opportunities, these regional playing games. And again, is it perfect? Is it exactly the way we want it? No, but we're all going to keep fighting for this. And I think it's something that has shown some positive growth that we can that we can build off of. The NFHS is the National Federation of High School Sports. You can take a look at the 10-year window leading up to 2019, pre-pandemic, and you can see the percentage percentage increase for water polo. Is it in there? Almost a 9% increase in the participation of boys water polo at the high school level. And and for for the for women's water polo, for the girls level, you're seeing almost an 18% growth, positive change moving forward. I put that in relation to looking at the numbers at the NFHS level for sports like football on the on the boy's side, seeing that it's down 10% over the last 10 years, right? So as well, other sports are starting to, participation is starting to drop. We're starting to see our sport continue to grow. And and mainstay sports like girls softball at the high school level, you know, dropping a couple of percentage points in the last 10 years and continuing to see water polo rise, I think it's something that we want to recognize. And we again, want to continue to fuel that growth. And Texas is one place for it, but I think there's there's more that we can do. Here's another look at it at the collegiate level. So across the board, if this is from data taken directly from our friends at the First Point Volleyball Foundation. And a lot, you'll find that this coalition that we participate in with other coach associations has really, at least over the last three, four years, has brought us, and I think more strength in the fight of working with the swimmings and the volleyballs and 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 sports that are akin to us along along the way. But if you look at the NCAA level, this is specifically on the men's side, that there's been that 17% increase on the men's side at the NCAA level. And that's something that I mentioned earlier, but you start seeing seeing the numbers that that keep us going. There has been some expansion. I crossed out Urbana University. We'll talk about them in a second here. But here's just a quick look since 2015 of all the programs that have that have been added across the board. And this also includes junior colleges. You see things like Crafton Hills, Las Pecitas. You see some of these junior colleges in California that are also adding water polo, which is all levels for the coach association of water polo are important for us, right? We want to see the continued growth across the board that includes junior college. It includes divisions one, two, and three, includes NAIA, which we'll talk about a lot too, Ottawa University, now in Arizona, being the sole NAIA school out there. And also the other school with Arizona State, as we continue to try to build build there, NAIA is going to be an important part of the model moving forward. If you look at this, this is from our friends at the Threefold Consulting Group. They shared this with the ICAC. Across the board, across sports in in the NCAA, there have been some really, really hard-hit sports in the pandemic over the course of of 2020. This is not to downplay the losses that we have had. But it is to show that we have come out of this and out now. When we come out of it, you can see the losses there on the left-hand side. But what's really important as we come out of this pandemic and as we as we as we approach this, our ability to retain sport, our our programs and to add more is more crucial than ever. Because just so that we've, just because we've come out of this in a small way, right? We need to make sure that we have more to go ahead here. So we lost Monmouth, both men's and women's programs at Monmouth in Illinois, a division three program. We talked about Urbana University, the entire university shut down. So it wasn't just that water polo wasn't going to be added as a university that no longer exists. We lost the Sonoma State Women. It's very, very early in the pandemic, along with the George Washington Women as well. And some of the things that COVID has done and the pandemic has done is that it pronounced some of the issues that existed before. So if programs were cut right when the pandemic started, that means there were issues prior to the pandemic that were leading leading there. And that's what we want to be proactive about. And we're going to talk about that in a second as well. Another, when we lost the LaSalle men, and LaSalle continued, they they competed in their last season this year as well. One thing to note here is there they reinvested the money that they took from the from the the men and have retained their women's program and have added some more some more funding there. So again, across the board, we're we're thoughtful of these losses. And we want to fight to bring these programs back and to keep them going. But also, at the same time, want to understand that we want to keep our programs moving forward. Why are universities cutting sports, right? Why are universities dropping? It's almost, generally speaking, we like to say that they're dropped for financial considerations. Right? But for one of the main reasons that these these programs or we're seeing programs being cut at this level has to do with how they are tied in to the university. There's two, there's there's two things that happen here, right? One, they will first look at the money. But we will have had situations where universities will say, we have the money for the program, but this program does not fit into the university, does not fit into what what we are doing when I speak, when I speak to athletic directors. One of the ways they don't fit in is the lack of multi-sport conferences. So in part of our growth strategy moving forward has to be that we are working, working towards being into the same conference as the other sports in the university, right? So it's great that we have the MPSF. It's great that we have the GCC. It's great that we have the WWPA. But these are not multi-sport conferences and the true nature of what exists on the college on college campuses, right? So when we say today that two MPSF schools are competing for a national championship here in about 40 minutes, what we what we would rather say is that two Pac-12 conference sport teams, right, are competing in there. When the Pac-12 conference is sponsoring men's and women's water polo, that's going to to indire these programs closer to their universities. When the Ivy, and speaking for the Ivy Leagues, now Coach Mercado Minnis, you guys can speak in, right? We, Dan Sheridan, the CFA has done a phenomenal job of helping grow this sport across the country in his in his career. He's been a mainstay. He's been a leader in this and has been a huge partner and collaborator on this. And we really appreciate everything Dan Dan has done for us and for the sport. It's a huge shout out to him, but also understanding that the future of the sport has to lie into the Ivy League Conference, being able to sponsor the sport, right? At that level, so that the the programs stay 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 in their schools. And so you can see some of these things that are out there that that we see, but the sustainability and the relationship on campus involves the conference. It also involves alumni support, not just alumni financial support. It also includes what your alumni do on campus. You have alumni who are serving on committees for the university. You have alumni who are serving the community within the university so that they know that water polo is an active member of the university as a whole. And that's something that we all want to be aware of. When these athletic directors evaluate programs, right? When 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 athletic directors are evaluating programs, what they have, we did a survey, right? With the Collegiate Swimming and Diving Coaches Association, right, of America, when they surveyed all their athletic careers and said, how do you evaluate what's most important for your program in the Division One schools? And when they say autonomy, when it says autonomy there in the middle, that means the autonomy five, the power five conferences. They look at their sports programs a little different. Outside of the power five programs, ADs said that the number one benchmark for evaluation, when they're evaluating coaches, when they're evaluating programs, is the student athlete experience. Second came academics. Third came the fiscal management of the program. How are you fundraising? How are you making yourself financially independent at the at the university? For the team image, what type of image are you giving us? And fifth was athletic performance. So programs are not being lost or gained based on winning and losing at the visual level. It's clear is that that the student athlete experience and how the the team has tied themselves into the campus is what's paramount. And what's interesting, even on the power five level, is that the athletic performance is still third, right? It was not number one. It was still third on that level. So something to think about when you're talking about how college campuses are being judged, or college teams are being judged or looked at at the collegiate level. And this is straight again, straight data from the athletic director's mouth. So what it takes to save our sports, some of these sports, again, from our friends at the Threefold Consulting Group that helped the ICAC with some of this research. Some of the programs that were cut during COVID are now coming back, right? So some of them have come back. And so we've seen a law, there was a massive amount of programs cut at Brown University. And so when that was happening and and they came back, there were certain reasons that those came back. And there was a lot of fight in the in in the alumni groups and universities to support to to keep those. Coach Mercado, I don't know if you want to add anything to to the ability for us to bring programs back that have been cut.
No, I think the the slide pretty much lays it out. You know, pretty straightforward, you know, it's like when the programs, when a lot of, during the pandemic, a lot of universities did cut did cut programs. And the ones that were brought back, there was, there was, first of all, there was the alumni and the community uproar that was able to to rally. And but some of it also came from 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 fundraising, that last minute fundraising that was able to to pull in. But the slide pretty much is is pretty accurate with with what it what it took to bring those sports back.
So does that, that does not mean that we are done fighting for the programs that have been cut. It does not mean that that if a program's cut in the future, it's not able to come back based on these reasons. But it's really important to recognize that it's so much easier for us right now to work towards retaining and building the the foundation for your program at the university level for all of you who are out watching and listening to this as alums, right? As alums, as parents, as community members, as people who are endeared to the programs that you are in, it's much easier for us to retain them to work on cuts, to find sustainability models at your university, than to have to come back and try to bring a program back from being resurrected from being cut. So that's what we want to work towards is avoid the cut, but work towards, if you see it coming, which we should all be seeing things coming like this during the pandemic right in COVID, how can we, how can we bring things back along the, or how can we keep it from getting cut along the way? Another partner in this that has been very helpful along the way is the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee. So they've started a position. For those who have been around, those who've been around the sport for a long time, the USOPC and the NCAA have kind of always been maybe two organizations working in parallel, but not necessarily always collaborating together. So in the last, again, the last four or five years, something that's been helpful is they started a full-time position at the USOPC and they hired Director of Collegiate Partnerships. Her name is Sarah Wahemi. And she's been a wonderful partner in all of this. And they're working really hard on campaigns. There's a campaign called Olympians Made Here, where they're working with institutions directly who are who have Olympians at the NCAA level and then who have moved on. They've they've done a lot to retain and to give the colleges the ability to promote the Olympic movement on campus and took away some of the barriers that were there. They've been very, very helpful. And so one of the things that they've been doing is also helping NGBs along the way, understand what some of the things that they can do, self-sport and and proudly, water polo is one of those sports that is used as an example, as using an example of what you can do. So a couple of years ago, USA Water Polo, in conjunction with the ACWPC, has helped underwrite the Division Three National Championship. So we were able to host our first one in December of 19, of 2019 with the men. We've had to cancel the other one since. We will not be able to unfortunately host the women's Division Three Collegiate Championship this spring as the Sky Eye Conference is not participating. But to be able to hold a Division Three Collegiate Championship, and this helps segue us into what our true strategy is at the college level, that the Division Three growth is really what's most important. And by giving them a national championship, by giving the 18, 19 institutions that we have across the board, men's and women's wise, a national championship to play for, something to play for along the way, not only helps retain those 18, 19 programs, but it encourages new programs to add, right? Encourages new programs to bring in because they know that there's something to go towards. We're also talking about this Division Two level. Felix, I'll let you talk about that in a second. Some of the things that we're that we're working on across the board. But I want to give everybody just a chance to 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 get a sense of like the joy that these athletes felt while they were competing. I just wanted to get that raw emotion. I want that gets me fired up every time I see that because those athletes treated that Division Three National Championship like it was real. It was real for them. That was Winter College defeating Claremont McKenna in the in the championship game in December of 2019. They embraced this thing. It was the, all the fans came out. They embraced this thing. It was, they, the, all the fans came out, the environment was, was wonderful. We had hundreds of people watching on the live stream, and that was in the very first one. And this is something that we can build off of. This is not an original idea. Uh, Felix, uh, and I talked about this, uh, a decade ago, uh, and we took the model from the, uh, from men's volleyball. Uh, and they started, uh, the Molton Championship in nineteen ninety-seven, and it was a, again, privately sponsored through the Coach Association, N G B, people working together, started a Division Three National Championship for, for, uh, volleyball. And they started, uh, with small, with small numbers, the Division Three level, and now have grown, I want to say something like five hundred percent at the Division Three Collegiate Level over the course of those twenty years, right? So our goal is not to wait twenty years to see that exponential growth, right? We want to see it, uh, sooner rather than later, but these, this type of growth at Division Three level is possible, uh, by giving a championship. And what happens is, and I said this earlier, if we get forty on the women's side, fifty on, on the men's side, Division Three programs to sponsor varsity water polo, the NCAA, but as per their bylaws, will then sponsor the championship at the national level, and we will no longer have to look for the private funding, right, and the fundraising taken to, 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 to make this work, right? We want to build as many programs as we can, so that the NCAA then, then, then takes this. And we can create a model like this for other, other divisions as well, as we can hopefully continue to see success. And unfortunately, because of COVID, we haven't been able to see a second or a third or the first women's ones yet, but this will come and it's there and it's, and it's not going anywhere. Felix said anything out there?
Yeah, so, you know, and, and the, the, probably the most impressive thing about the Division Three Championships is that we actually, um, had to hold it, we held it the same weekend as the men's Division One Championship up, um, up in Stockton. So it didn't take anything away from, from either championship and it happened on the same weekend. I think moving forward, we obviously don't want to hold them on the same weekend, so, um, so we, it could be, so there's more people that can do, that can watch both. But, you know, we, this model that we use at Division Three, you know, we're also moving forward and trying to see if we can get it going to Division Two level, because we know if our sport's going to grow, um, I think we came to a realization a while ago when we, when we proposed, um, you know, adding water polo to, to Oregon and Washington and Arizona. And, you know, I, I personally sat in one of the administrators at University of Miami and sat them down and why adding women's water polo, um, would have been a, a, a great sport to add, you know, it, it's, it's not gonna, it's right now, that's not where the growth is going to be. It's going to be at private universities, Division Two, Division Three. Um, and that's what we've been targeting, because I think the stronger our sport is at the varsity level, regardless of division, it only makes the Division One, um, programs, um, more sustainable. Because the, the, the most difficult thing is who are you going to play? You know, and, and when, you know, going back to the student athlete experience, a lot of that stuff, uh, it comes down to being able to play games. Um, not, are you, you know, as much as, you know, representing the Ivy League is, it's important, but the fact that we can play and that we are able to compete, uh, under the, the umbrella of the C W P A might not be the most, the perfect situation, because we obviously want to be Ivy League champs, but at le- least it allows us to compete and, and play teams like Bucknell and play teams like, like Navy and Iona, and that stuff does mean something. So sustaining Division One and, and keeping it strong, um, it, it will need Division Three and Division Two sports, um, schools to add, because the more programs we, we sponsor nationally, the stronger it is. So that's ultimately the mission. And, and we're hoping that, you know, if the one thing that COVID, um, one thing COVID did give us, it gave us time to sit back and really look at an attack plan and think what steps that we can do next, you know? You know, Teddy and I, you know, while badly as we wanted to compete, you know, our universities decided not to, you know, not to, to play this year, but that didn't stop us from continuing to see what we can do for our sport to grow. And along with Karen, um, who's not here, you know, taking time to be, to be part of this and all the other coaches that were on the board, that just, you know, we, we definitely see a growth in the sport. And now we, I feel comfortable saying that we have an attack plan that can be very successful if, if executed correctly. And I think that's, that's the plan that we're looking to do.
Yeah, and that's, let's, let's talk about that attack plan, right? Um, that, let's embrace this growth strategy of the D two and D three landscape. This is our call to action for everybody on this call, everybody listening and everyone, and as we, as we move forward here, um, um, for the rest of the day. There's the, what the attack plan that, that Felix is talking about, and again, I want to shout out Dan Sheridan and also Jennifer DeBeau, who's the Commissioner of the Skyak Conference for working with us on creating that Division Three National Championship. But because we have that now, it gives us the opportunity to, to build forward. And so that the reason the D two, D three landscape, and if we all embrace this, and I want us to, it's, it's difficult, because all of us are sitting back, especially as coaches, right? Uh, I, I, I daydream if like I could be the head coach at University of Texas, what a wonderful day that would be, right? You know, like Felix talked about University of Florida, University of Miami, be awesome to have these Division One programs, uh, to add, add, add water polo and, and to have these varsity places. But that is not the natural next step in our growth strategy and in our growth and in the, the trajectory of where we're headed right now. It's just not natural. So if you just think of the state of Texas, first and foremost, we need high school water polo to add, be added there, right? And now that they have high school water polo, we have one college program there, Austin College, Division Three Program. Has a lot of successes at the ground running. We're really excited about Austin College, but you're not going to go from Austin College to the University of Texas, next being the next ad, uh, in, in that state. The next ad in the state of Texas is going to be the rest of the schools with Austin College in their conference. Their conference is called the S C A C. If we can get that conference, as a Division Three Conference, to add varsity men's and women's water polo across the board there, then that conference gets an automatic bid to the Division Three National Championship, right? Then that Division Three National Championship gives, continues to grow, right? Then you have more schools being willing to add, uh, at the Division Three level. Then the NCAA sponsors, uh, a Division Three National Championship for us. Then high school water polo is thriving, right? With over a hundred and sixty just being added now in the fall of twenty twenty-two, thriving across the state, state of Texas. Then we can start saying, okay, University of Texas, you look at, look at all the water polo that's happening underneath you. Do you think you could probably add this? But they're not going to be the trailblazers in this, right? Um, Co- Felix said this as well. Um, I've had the, the privilege of sitting in some of these meetings with these A Ds at some of the power five schools, talking about water polo, big ten schools, PAC twelve schools. And when we talk to them about it, they are not going to do this haphazardly. These are, aren't decisions that are being made where they're going to throw a few bucks at it. Any dollar that they have right now is to keep themselves surviving and frankly to compete, uh, in the power five football landscape, which has changed everything. And all the resources are being sucked that way, right? So D two, D three is where it's at. And if we can follow that same model of, of volleyball, uh, we, that grew at that Division Two and Division Three level, lacrosse, same thing. When you see that type of growth at Division Two, Three level, that's the model that we want to go to. And it doesn't help, there's another statistic I like to throw out there a lot too. Division One Men's Volleyball, we all saw the tragic cut at Stanford, right? We saw the men's volleyball team and wrestling all being cut at Stanford University. This is awful, awful things that, that, that hap- happened at that level. The Division, Division One Schools have their own agendas of where this is going. Where Division and Two and Division Three see value in our sport is, is water polo becomes frankly, part of the revenue model for the school. It becomes an enrollment-driven opportunity for them to get a program on campus where athletes are, uh, applying to the school. A number of applications comes up, which means money in their application pool. It means the number of applications go up for the school, which is a great statistic for them to say. It means that there's athletes on campus that are paying tuition, more athletes on campus paying tuition. It keeps students there and it helps in, in kind of ingrain water polo into the university Division One. It's, 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 it's very different. At the moment, there's only twenty-three, Division, I think twenty-two, twenty-three, Division One Men's Volleyball Programs in the country. There's only twenty-one, twenty, I think between twenty-one and twenty-three, Division One Men's Volleyball Programs in the entire country, right? Where their growth is, though, they have in the hundreds of Division Three, and that's what maintains, uh, where, where they're at on this. And that's, and I think that's important to know. Support your alma maters and your local programs through meaningful actions. That means more than just donating to the programs that you're connected to. Please, please make sure that you're also giving, um, uh, your time, serving our committees, anything we can do to, to really in, again, ingrain water polo in, into the university. We talked about multi-sport conferences. And at your school, how can you become sustainable? We talked to all of our coaches about this at the beginning of the pandemic. We had a meeting with all ACW P C, uh, members, all the coaches in the country, and we said, what can you do to be sustainable at your university so that we can avoid the cut? We can deal with it. If we have to deal with a, a, a shorter budget, we have to deal with, with less scholarships, we have to deal with less things. We can do that. But it's again, harder to resurrect the program. So what can we do to, to make our program sustainable at that level? Um, and, and, uh, and I think the last thing we want to say too is, um, that this collaborates, the reason we wanted to have a town hall meeting today is to bring everyone together. Felix, you, you, you put a nice hashtag earlier today on, on, on something you said on Twitter, right, that we're, um, uh, we're stronger united, right? We're stronger together, right? We're stronger as a group. And I, and I have to say that one of the issues we have growing the sport of water polo across the country, someone who sits on a lot of meetings across the board internationally, domestically, collegiately, high school, club, whatever it is, the growth of our sport is hindered by our inability to collaborate together, right? Um, there's a lot of talk about, you know, water polo being a family, and we're a family that comes into this, but that doesn't show outward. Uh, it may show inward, but that's not forward-facing in our sport. And it starts from the top. We've been in meetings where the people at the International Olympic Committee at the I O C say, well, because Len and Fina, the European, uh, professional group and, uh, and Fina don't get along, we, we don't view water polo, uh, in a positive way. I've been in meetings with a lot of athletic directors at the collegiate level here in the States that say, because these clubs, I, I, I know about water polo, that there, but there's two clubs in this, uh, uh, in our area, and all they do is fight. All they do is complain, and there's all these negative things that come out of it. They're always speaking poorly about each other. Why would, why would we add water polo? This seems like you guys have a lot of infighting in, in, in what's happening. I've seen this happen a, a, across the board, and I, and I, we, we collectively just want to tell you that our collaboration needs to be forward-facing. People need to be able to see the fact that we're willing to work together. And it's one of the reasons why we were able to help preserve our, our season this year, like, uh, like Coach Minus said earlier. Um, but I think it's really important that everyone, and then, and because you're on the, in this, attending this town hall, I know that you care about water polo. I know that you care about collegiate water point, you care about the importance of it at the collegiate level. And we talked about it being the nexus and the, and the heart of the infrastructure for our sport professionally and, and the, and the marketplace for it. And so, um, really can't urge you more, uh, more for, towards that collaboration. I'll stop sharing my screen and we can, we can answer any questions, um, that, 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 that you all may have. Feel free to pop them into, uh, uh, into the chat, uh, as we go here.
Are you, John, are you going to read the, the questions?
Sure. Um, and I'll, I'll throw this one out to you again from, uh, one of our, one of our, uh, viewers has asked again about, um, gender equity at, at the, at the collegiate level. Both of you coach, uh, men's and women's programs, uh, at, at the varsity level. Um, Ted, anything you want to add about, uh, gender equity at the, at the collegiate level?
I mean, I think it, it's, hopefully, I know, I, I can only speak for myself that, you know, care as much I meant by women's program. Thing that was definitely the board talked about, where a lot of us coached both men and, um, you know, I think the women's, the women's side is growing. Uh, you know, they have a ten-team tournament, uh, you know, with, with the NC two A's and it's great to see. So, um, no, I don't, I don't think when, when we get to, uh, is we're going to see an inequity in what these, these programs are getting compared to what the, the programs on the men's side are getting as accordance to the NC two A's. I think it's all going to be right down the line. So I think that we're in a, a better place now than we have been in the past.
Yeah, and, and I would, I would add that, you know, I don't know how many Division One Men, um, sports programs have women head coaches, but I know that, you know, recently we just added two head, head, um, coaches that are women, uh, McHenry, um, with Colleen Listwisch and at, uh, Mount St. Mary's with, um, Alyssa De- Deonik. I don't want to butcher her name, but this is, this is definitely something that is, is growing. I mean, and so, you know, Ted, both of his assistants are, are, are women. I, you know, I, I will be hiring a female assistant. So we, we definitely would want to continue to grow. We definitely want to encourage more women to coach and to pursue coach, co- coaching, um, at the collegiate level, because there are going to be opportunities. And, and like I said, I, 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 I'm going to look back to see how many, how many actually, um, Division One Men's Sports have women head coaches. Like, we have two of them, and hopefully we're going to get more.
Yeah, those are, and, and, and we'll continue to, uh, um, and we'll continue to promote, uh, gender equity uh, and really diversity, equity, inclusion across the board. It's something that, that we're very passionate about. And, um, and I know Ted, something that you, uh, and, and I have been working on as well as creating, um, a recognition, uh, for universities when it comes to diversity and gender equity and, and, and inclusion. And that's something that we want to, uh, now as an ACW P C can put out um, and recognize and give acknowledgement to these universities for their work in these areas. And I think that's important. And that's what the USO P C is doing in regards to keeping programs. And if we can continue to recognize those who champion diversity, then I think it will hopefully continue to encourage that, that growth as well.
And, and there was a, the follow-up question on that, sorry to jump in, is that also what we're doing at the association level is we're, you know, for the first time, you know, after, after the end of the summer, we're going to have, we're actually going to try to gather the collegiate club coaches that are out there and try to give, give those coaches professional development opportunities. We're creating an assistant coaches, um, member, you know, on a board member, that's, that's representing the assistant coaches to, to make sure that we're addressing all the, the, the lack of professional development opportunities that they, they might not have. And, and hopefully as an association, we're also looking to grow our sport. I know that, you know, again, another question that was asked in the, the chat was also about the officials. And, you know, we're also moving in that direction where we're trying to make sure that the officials are getting better. And, and we have enough officials, we're adding, you know, if we're adding these programs, we want to make sure we have enough coaches. We want to ensure we have enough officials to cover every game. Because those are important questions that administrators will ask when we're adding, when we're looking for them to add the sport at the collegiate level.
I also, I also think, uh, USA Water Polo is doing a good job with, with coaches' development, with their app and, and having, you know, opportunities to talk to, to other coaches. And, and I think that's something that's going to be very important in growth is, is, uh, helping coaches grow and become better so that we as a sport can keep growing. Because I know we've had a lot of programs add, but there's not a lot of people applying for these programs. And I think that's an important piece is, is that, you know, you, you, you have to realize that to grow, we need coaches and we need coaches to take jobs at these Division Two and Division Three levels that might not be in sunny Southern California, um, you know, and that's how we're going to grow and, and become better. Or else these programs won't add if they can't find qualified coaches.
Most, most definitely. And that, that needs to happen. And for, for, for everybody out there who's, who's watching and listening, and, and, and part of this, that's, that's why we have to encourage and that part of that collaboration has to be that we are spending time developing and nurturing coaches so that they, people are excited to be in that career. And they're excited to go to a place like Monmouth. They're excited to go to a place like, um, in, in the Midwest and Texas, when the more colleges are adding and, and when we're at, then you'd be ready to take that job. Um, uh, one of our coaches asked, uh, asked a great question. What are good resources to begin conversations about proactively implementing financial sustainability, uh, measures at, at our colleges? Um, and, and the resources directly with your athletic directors, right? First, obviously, we are here to support, right? The ACW P C will continue to put out, um, uh, uh, letters and be active with you as much as we possibly can. But your athletic directors and the leadership on campus needs to know that you are fighting for the program, right? When, uh, when you have university presidents, when you have athletic directors who don't know, um, uh, the water polo coach, who don't know the water polo community, who don't know the alumni, who don't know the parents on, on campus, that's an issue. Um, and then, and, and, uh, we learned this, I learned this very early on, when I first started coaching at Bucknell University. I remember the first piece of advice Dan Sheridan gave me was, go meet, go meet with your A D regularly. Even if he doesn't give you a meeting, go meet with your A D regularly. Meet with the president on campus, get to know everybody on campus, go find a way, because the more that these, you can become endeared and ask that specific question. Ask that specific question of what can we do to, to sustain ourselves? Is it a financial issue, right? Is it a participation issue? What's the issue that we need to address now to make sure that our program stays here forever, right? Um, and that's a question that you can ask directly. And, and you have to be upfront and honest about it. A Ds will flip that back on you. We've all been, as coaches, have been in the room when the A D says, well, coach, you're lucky to have a program, you know? And when you ask for things, they turn around and they say, well, you're lucky that we've kept water polo here at a varsity level, and you should be thankful you have a job. The A Ds will tell us that. Well, then go back to your A D. Okay, great. I'm thankful to have a job. What can I do to keep it, right? What can we do to keep this there? And I think that's a really important question that you want to be able to start asking and what can be done now, so it's not too late. You can't ask that question retroactively. You have to ask that question proactively. Uh, another one of our coaches asked, you know, how many more D two, schools would you like to see add before there can be a D two national championship? Not, not that many more. We need a few more. Uh, I, I think I need a few more. And if we can have, uh, sponsor and, and work together to, to create the funding for a Division Two, um, National Championship, we want to do it. I think there's, we're, we're starting to sense that there's an appetite for it. As long as there's an appetite for it, uh, we want to make that, we want, we want to make that happen, uh, so that we can, again, continue to grow. But we would love to see a few, a few more, um, add to, to, to test that. Uh, we really appreciate everybody's, uh, uh, time. We, we appreciate you listening, appreciate you participating. It means you care about the sport at the collegiate level. This is what we want. We know that the future of our sport in America i- i- is very much tied to how it is, is at the NCAA level. And while we're getting out through this pandemic and while we're coming out of it, um, uh, we have these positive things that have happened, but we, we want to address the concerns. We want to address the few losses that we've had, and we want to address that moving forward. We need everybody's help and everybody's collaboration to, to make this work and to push ahead, because all of this for us is a, a labor of love. And, and, and if we can continue to push in that direction, we, we will, we will see fruitful gains. We do have great opportunities ahead of us at the Division Two and Division Three level that we, um, need to embrace, uh, together. And I hope that, uh, as we watch the Division One Championship sign, as we watch the NCAA Championship right now in a few minutes, uh, we celebrate that water polo persevered through this, uh, we need your help moving forward. So, um, thank you all, uh, to everybody. And Felix said any closing words?
Yeah, no, I would, I would echo that. And I, and I, and, you know, going back to the, the stronger, to, united, uh, you know, hashtag, I put it, it literally is to, for, to do what the, the, the men's teams that for, to do with the, the, the men's teams that got, that were able to play this year and go through the, all the hoops they had to jump to. To go through the hoops that the women are doing right now, you know? And I know I speak for Teddy, two programs that weren't able to play because those universities felt it wasn't in the best interest. That doesn't mean, you know, we obviously will support our, our universities. But I, I think it's, it's a testament to what these, our student athletes are amazing human beings, men and women. And I, and I think we need to celebrate them and, and embrace them and, and get as many people watching these games as possible to show the university that there is support for our sport and for those student athletes. So thank you, guys. Thank you, John, for, for putting this together. Teddy's always great seeing you, except on a pool deck. And, and thank you for everyone that, that, that decided to join us today. It's really, it's important for our sport.
Yeah. Yeah. Follow us on Twitter, right? W, W Polo Coaches, at W Polo Coaches on Twitter. On, we have a website now. Felix put together NCAA Water Polo Coaches dot org. So NCAA Water Polo Coaches dot org. It's a resource not only for all of our coaches. It has all our bylaws, everything on there, but it also has resources for student athletes looking to play in college or directory, an updated directory of, of, of all the schools that are sponsored water polo there. So again, NCAA Water Polo Coaches dot org. And move over to NCAA dot com right now. And let's watch UCLA versus USC and hopefully we all enjoy the game. And thank you again.
Thanks for coming, everyone.